I'd like to welcome you to the March 4th West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, please sign in. We have Councilman Sanddager on the phone and Councilman Trimble is stuck in traffic, so we'll see if we can get through city council reports before he gets here.
Here.
At the moment, we have two council members present in the chambers and one on the phone. Okay, any changes to the agenda, Ryan?
There is one change. Item 4C9, which was a renewal of liquor license for wine experience at Jordan Creek, has been removed from the agenda because the applicant came in today to withdraw their application.
Okay. With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Three yes.
Item 2 is citizen forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on any item that's not part of public hearings, which is item 6 or new business, item 7. All right, seeing known, we'll move on to mayor, city council, city manager reports. Jim, we'll start with you.
This time, your honor.
All right, Kevin?
Nothing this time, your honor.
Russ? City council reports.
Just a quick report out of me. F and A met on February 21st. It was kind of a short meeting, but we reviewed and approved three projects for the property tax rebate program. Two of them were from Herd Real Estate and are on the agenda tonight. It's two 34,000 square foot, two-story office buildings with minimum assessment agreement of $6 million. One of them's at 40th and West Town and the other one's at 85th and Mills. The rebate for the projects are a little bit different based on the TIF rate of Dallas County versus West Des Moines and Polk County, but it is a $6 million minimum assessment agreement. And then we also agreed to another project. There'll be a great project for the Valley Junction area. It's going to be another restaurant user that's going to be coming in and will be a really nice addition down there. It's going to be a $1.2 million minimum assessment agreement for that project and create a number of jobs down there. And then last but not least, we agreed to amend the process, the TIF process that we have to basically include an amount in that TIF area not to exceed a certain dollar amount for the projects within the TIF district. And the reason for that is that there are a number of other cities that are doing it this way. Every time that we have to include another project, we have to certify expenditures under the TIF, we've got to amend the TIF district. And that's costing us anywhere from $5,000 to $7,000 each time that we do that, plus a lot of staff time. So what we're going to be doing from now on is what other cities are doing, and that's to have that ceiling, not to exceed more than X amount worth of incentives within the TIF. And we've run that by our outside legal counsel. And like I said, other cities are doing that, so that should be okay and save us a lot of money and a lot of time. And with that, that concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you, your honor. I do want to mention that last Thursday, we did have a rights commission meeting. And it was a meeting and then it was followed by a strategic planning set, one of about three more to come. And it was very robust. I want to thank Tom Haddon, our city manager, for being at that meeting as well. Leadership does matter and his role in this commission and helping us to solidify what our role is is critical. We are embarking upon trying to decide what it is the commission will do, what greater impact that can have on this community, and how can our impact be felt to ensure that everyone has a voice here in West Des Moines. So I'm very, very proud to be a part of that. And I was very proud also this past Saturday to represent West Des Moines as a keynote speaker for a young women's conference of 200-plus middle school girls across the state. And I had an opportunity to talk with them about leadership and running for office and serving communities and exercising their passion. So I was very pleased to represent a city of West Des Moines in that impactful endeavor. That concludes my report.
Okay, Tom?
No report, your honor.
All right. Michelle, we probably need to re-sign in.
Yep, we'll need to re-sign.
Sorry about that. There was quite the traffic jam on I-235.
Was it in the city?
No, no. It's in Des Moines. Windsor Heights in Des Moines.
Cleared up when it got to West Des Moines.
Yes, for sure. Smooth sailing at that point.
Okay, item 4 is the consent agenda. Are there any council members that want to pull any item on the consent agenda? If not, I'll take a motion for all of them.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Okay.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
All right, item 5, old business, 5A amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter 6 commercial office and industrial zoning district, modify the permitted uses and permitted conditional uses in the professional commerce park and office zoning district. City initiated. This is an ordinance for the second. Third reading, final adoption, and no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Okay.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes, notice amended to city code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, Title IX zoning, Chapter 6, commercial office and industrial zoning district, to modify the permitted uses and permitted conditional uses allowed in the professional commerce park and office zoning districts.
Move approval of the second reading.
Okay.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Voting machine is slow tonight.
Cold.
It is cold. It can't take the cold anymore.
None of us can.
Move waiver, third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
Four yes.
All right, item B, amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter 15, off-street parking and loading, modify certain parking and loading regulations. City initiated. This is an ordinance for the second. Third reading, final adoption, and no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Okay.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes, an ordinance amended to city code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, Title IX zoning, Chapter 15, off-street parking and loading, Section 4, general off-street parking regulations, Section 6, design standards, Section 7. Number of parking spaces required to amend regulations pertaining to off-street parking and loading.
Move approval of the second reading.
Okay.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes.
Move waiver, the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes.
All right, item 5C, West Public Services Facility Building and Site Improvements, Phase 2. City initiated a resolution to award the contract for the base bid and alternates 1 through 6.
Move approval.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Very happy to see where the bids came in at. Extremely under budget, so it's good.
Yep, and I'll mention that it's anticipated that the project will be done August 31st of 2020.
Yes. It almost makes me nervous it came in so low, but I assume that everything checks out and these guys have done other similar projects before, otherwise we wouldn't be dealing with it right now, so.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes.
All right, item 6, public hearings. We have a number of them tonight. Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter 1, entitlements, process and procedures; Chapter 2, zoning rules and definitions; Chapter 4, zoning districts and map; Chapter 5, agricultural open space and residential zoning district; Chapter 7, setback and bulk density regulations; Chapter 10, performance standards; and Chapter 19, landscaping. Update regulations pertaining to building setback and separation requirements and bulk density regulations initiated by the city of West Des Moines. This is continued from the February 4th West Des Moines City Council meeting. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
January 18th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Were received any written comments?
Planted zoning commission by a vote of six yes, one was absent. Adopted a resolution recommending approval of this city code amendment.
And before I open the public hearing, Linda's got a short presentation to give us a little bit more background and overview of this, and then we'll have a public hearing. Also note that the Development Planning Council Committee has dealt with this issue on February 25th of 2016, August 8th of 2016, October 3rd of 2016, and December 10th of 2018. So this has been going on for almost over three years now. Okay, Linda?
Okay. Linda Schimmel, development coordinator. Wanted to provide this opportunity to kind of go in through some more detail on some of the items that are in this amendment. And as you realize, it's pretty lengthy. These are items that we went through with planning and zoning and they asked for more information. So I'll quickly go through this and then I'm available for any other questions.
Okay.
So the first item is something that we are proposing to initiate in single-family zoning districts, which is basically detached townhome ownership. And the thought is, is that we were getting more and more applications that proposed some type of development that way, and this may be able to give developers and owners another option to reduce land costs associated with a home. Now, there's certain safeguards we have put in place, but one of the things that I wanted to point out, first of all, is as we started going through this process, when we used the term postage stamp lot, people got the connotation that meant it was a small lot and small house. And that's not the case. So we've changed the terminology to footprint lot. Now Lynn has a swear jar back in our office, and every time I slip up and say postage stamp lot instead of footprint lot, I have to put a dollar in it. So hopefully I won't have to pay anything tonight when I go through this.
I'll see if I can get you a vacation out of this, Lynn.
You know, Brett, we'll pay for your alternate number seven on your facility.
Yeah.
It's only $18,000.
Not yet, but we'll get it switched over.
Okay, so while they're switching it over, the other, something we're going to go through after postage stamp lots, oh, there's a dollar, to go through some of the architecture requirements. In essence, we had some in place, but what we did is got a little more specific with it. And then we also reached out to the communities to find out what they're doing. So we'll kind of go through that. And I think that's some good knowledge for you is to kind of know what the other cities are doing in the metro.
So let me ask you then, Linda. Without this change, right now, the detached townhomes are not happening in West Des Moines? They could, but it's just, it makes it so difficult to do them that the developers are not doing them?
It's happening in multifamily zoning, typically medium density.
Okay, but not in single family?
It's not allowed in single family right now.
Okay, then I guess what are the negative consequences of that? I mean, we're going to have single-family residences and then like a detached townhome right next to it?
Right. Our thought is that-
So it could be a single-family home, single-family home, detached townhome, single-family home, single-family home, detached townhome?
And so that lot line basically is just a line on the ground. Nobody perceives that. A detached townhome looks and feels and acts the same as a single-family home. What this provides is flexibility in developing infill lots, lots that have challenging topography. It also enables what we call cluster developments, where you can cluster homes in an area that doesn't have to touch things as steep slopes or timber or, you know, anything that's something you want to preserve. So this gives, it's not going to be something that's applied everywhere, but on those challenging areas or areas where they want to reduce the lot cost with the house and hopefully reduce some of those land costs and purchase price, this is an option for them.
But we don't have a minimum lot size right now.
No.
Right? I mean, so how does this, I mean?
Well, maybe let me go through the PowerPoint and give you some examples. That might help.
I'm with you, Russ. I'm not exactly sure how this is.
It's on there, but we may need it bigger, so.
Yeah, there we go.
There we go. Okay, so, and I'm going to read this just for Councilman Sanddager's benefit. So what we're proposing is to allow footprint lots as a subdivision regime in the following single-family zoning districts: open space, residential estate, residential, single-family, and single-family residential. It leaves out some of our smaller lot zoning classifications. Within this development, the maximum unit density, the aggregate minimum lot size, minimum frontage and setbacks will all remain the same for this regime, the same as any single family. So the intent is they can't intensify the development at all. It's just a different ownership scheme. And then here's an example. A one acre development in RS5 zoning, which has a minimum lot size of 5,000 square foot, could be subdivided in the traditional manner into eight lots, assuming they didn't have to do any street lot for that. However, a footprint lot subdivision would still need to comply with the maximum unit density for RS5 zoning of six units per acre. So they could not take advantage of the eight units per acre because there's a second criteria to develop that area. And then we're also asking that developments that are using those footprint lots, those detached townhomes, will go through the site plan review process the same as any other medium-density development. And that's where we want to make sure that we've got utility, service, access, et cetera, as those lots develop, the same as is any other development that we would have that's attached multifamily. So here's an example. This is an area that was actually developed in the 1970s in the city. East-West Street is actually Fuller Road and the north-south streets, Grand Avenue, heading down to the park. So this is actually with the Heatherwood PUD.
Sure.
Developed in the 1970s and it was, it's single-family zoning and was developed with those postage stamp lots. Now it's bumping up right against traditionally platted lots. And you can kind of see how that then preserves some of that open space that the development shares.
Yeah, that is a very unique neighborhood. It is. Interesting mix.
And then this is the other aspect I touched on, cluster development. The concept with this is rather than following the same requirements as far as lot size, if you can cluster those homes closer together and leave some area for open space or undeveloped or something that is preserving a certain aspect, that allows you to get the same development density but not have to worry about masquerading, longer streets, et cetera. So as we move into areas of terrain that are going to be more challenging, this may be a helpful option for development.
Linda, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'm tracking on this.
Okay.
I mean, and now you're going to the next one, or actually I was envisioning this and I've heard some complaints from neighbors. I mean, I thought you just said that we're not changing the setback, any of the setbacks for this, that so that if we're able to put a different ownership scheme in here, put the detached townhome, that detached townhome on that lot is not going to have any different front or rear or side setbacks than would a single-family home on that lot, right? So then how are we helping getting more?
When we measure it against the adjacent lot. So if I am in a zoning that has 20-foot side yard setbacks-
This can be close.
-when it meets up to single-family, it has to meet that same setback. So the expectation is the person who has that single-family home, that house next to him meets those same setbacks.
So the very outside, looking at this, looking at this one here, these two pictures, I mean, essentially that outside line, that big rectangle with the little rectangles in it, that one has to, that has to meet, I mean, that's like one big lot then with little lot, little developments inside of it?
Yep. So this example, actually, this is an area that was originally platted into those six lots. At some time, the owner bought all those and aggregated them. And if we took that traditional plating and returned back to that, you could, with the criteria we had, you could change that back to those six lots. But again, with a postage stamp lot, because of the requirements as far as dwellings per acre, postage stamp lots could only be five versus a six traditionally platted. The reason I'm showing this to you is the assumption that you can always get more houses on the same property does not always happen.
So on this, because I want to make sure I'm understanding this too, assuming north is up, the east lot line of, the east side of 4105 would have the same setback to 4097 that 4097 has to 4033. But then interior, they shorten up.
Right. So in essence, we, they can group closer together.
They're closer to each other.
Yes, but not to-
But the outside-
Okay, gotcha.
That's, that's right. Okay, okay. Boy. I don't know.
And then this is another development, little bigger lot size requirement. Because we have more than four dwelling units, we would have to have a public street. So this is showing that you'd have to flat out a street lot. And so we're showing code sec configuration. So with this particular situation, we would be able to plot out 10 lots. The limiting factor with this is the minimum lot width. If we use a footprint development, which again, we can kind of squish them a little closer together, we would still have the street that's required, but we could get 12 of those footprint lots in there. So this is a situation where you can gain a little more density.
But just so everybody out in the audience and watching online understands, these are going to look, these footprint houses are going to look and feel when you drive by and look at them, it's going to look like a single-family house that's at 821, for example.
Right.
The outward appearance does not look any different than any other single-family house.
Right. And we're not forcing a smaller size with this footprint lot. They will look and feel and act the same.
Okay.
So then the last example was something that we had quite a few inquiries on, splitting a larger lot within an RE zoning district. And so if you were to subdivide this, and we kind of assumed that the lot in the center with the house, the house would stay, you could get three lots in there because of the frontage and area requirements for lots. If you did the footprint lot regime, you could get four homes. Now you notice that one that's farther south is kind of closer to the house than the ones that are in the rear. That's because that home that would be in the front would still have to meet that average front yard setback that's established by the neighborhood. So again, we want it to meet that context of the already established neighborhood.
I mean, I understand this. This makes a lot of sense. It's just, you know, how the, how the practical application of it goes and how the, you know, somebody, for example, if this were done, sitting here at 5111, like this Ashworth, right?
I think so, yeah.
5111 Ashworth and 5101 Ashworth and 5041, the real test is going to be when we go and do this and vote on this and allow it and then see how they react to it. I mean, my, the nerves that I have in doing this, I totally understand the method behind it and what we're trying to do, and it makes a lot of sense. But is this going to make sense to the people that live around it once we allow it to happen? And then once we allow it to happen, if they, if everywhere this goes, neighbors come in with pitchforks and torches and don't like it?
Right.
Then what do we do? Undo it?
And so we've put some criteria in place to help give some tummy comfort. So like I said, they have to meet all the other criteria, they have to go through a site plan process, and they still have to go through plating process. So they're not getting off easy if they do multiple homes on a larger lot. The other thing that Planted Zoning was concerned about is that context of the neighborhood. Again, we'll have to meet the, whatever the setback is established for the neighborhood. The other criteria that's been put in place is that in this particular development choice, you'll have to average the home size in the surrounding area, and you can build homes no smaller than 75% of the average of those homes that surround you.
That will help.
No larger than 150%. So again, it's very similar to what we do when we have two dissimilar multifamily zonings. We try to give them that buffer.
I think that will help because people are, that's one of the things I think people will come in and say, hey, you know, I've got, whatever, I've got a $250,000 home and because you allowed this, there's going to be four $110,000 homes around me, and that's going to bring down my property values and everything else. But if they have to at least be close to the square footage, that's not going to be true. It's going to be a more similar, it's going to be more similar in value.
Well, I want to have the public hearing. Are you, is that your presentation, Linda, or do you have anything else?
Well, I'll jump into architecture requirements unless you want to open it up for the-
I want to, I want to do the public hearing after you're done.
Okay.
I just think it's really important that we understand this because this is very involved and I don't want to leave here and having voted on something that I don't completely understand 100% and know what the potential negative consequences are, unintended consequences of this. So I appreciate you going through it.
No, and like I said, we've been working on it for three years.
Sure, sure.
At least.
So the people that are on, I get that. The people that are on development and planning, I appreciate them vetting this and obviously they think this is okay, but a lot of us haven't dealt with this, so.
So go ahead and wrap up your presentation and I'll have the public hearing.
So then we'll jump into architecture. So what I have on here is what the existing requirements are, and we are just really focusing on multifamily development. We're not focusing on single-family. We're not focusing on commercial office industrial. This is just multifamily. So this is our current language. Right now, we have no architectural requirements for medium-density residential zoning districts. High-density residential districts are very generic, shall attempt to express a creative presentation of exterior building materials, which I'm all for giving people freedom for designing, but when we have developers come in and need to know the expectations so they can decide what their investment is, this really doesn't give them much direction. So really, that's kind of that part of that conversation of we want to give the expectations, yet try to give as much freedom as possible. So just to give you an idea where this would apply, it would be all multifamily residential districts. So we pulled in medium-density. It would not apply to any newer and existing plan unit development or specific plan that already has architectural requirements because they supersede straight code. And then magnitude, multifamily residential zoning land area that's not in a PUD encompasses a little over 4% of the total area of our corporate boundary.
Do we share this with the multifamily developers in our community?
We talk to the cities. We have not talked to developers.
Which we usually talk to the developers before we do something like this.
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we do that as well, so that they fully understand this and we understand where, how this impacts them. You know, the other thing that I'm thinking as you're going through this is, I mean, I like this. I like being able to have some design standards here. You've got to have a certain amount of, and I don't know that it specifically will say that because it gives flexibility, but stone and brick and that kind of thing. But, and obviously we want to also maintain that flexibility and, but as I'm thinking about this, if somebody comes in, if a developer comes in, aren't they just going to ask for taking a straight zone piece and making it a PUD so they can avoid this and get around it?
They could be, but I would say by and large, our PUDs are more restrictive on architecture requirements and straight zoning, even with this change.
Okay.
So maybe let me roll through the rest of it and then we can jump into any other questions. So as I mentioned, we reached out to all the other communities and got a good feel for what they have for requirements right now. So the communities that have specific design criteria for multifamily citywide, not just in PUDs, are Altuna, which requires masonry on the exterior from 20 to 50%. Ankeny, they admitted they have an informal requirement to have masonry at least three to four foot high all the way around the building. Clive requires masonry of a minimum of 50% for multifamily. Des Moines, which is a pending adoption for the Form Based zoning ordinance, requires each facade to have 80% plating in what they call allowed major materials, which are in essence, stone, full-dimensional brick, traditional stucco, and then some alternate materials, finished concrete, metal panels, and wooden composite rain screen. Now, they have some hesitation with that just because it's become the primary material downtown, so they're thinking about maybe limiting the amount to that. And then communities that have specific design criteria in PUDs or special districts, could be corridor areas, town center areas, et cetera. Altuna, about 50% of their PUDs have more stringent requirements than their already material requirements that they have in straight code. Ankeny, in general, the PUDs have stronger design language. The Prairie Trail Development has its own design and material requirements, and that's reviewed by an architectural committee. The Clive Town Center Area requires masonry to be the dominant plating material. Indianola requires 100% of the facade facing corridors to be masonry, EFS or composite panels. Johnson and their mixed-use district requires 75% of the plating area to be masonry or architectural steel. Mill Hay Town Center requires 80% of the facades full of veneer brick. Urbendale requires multifamily and commercial to be done within a P, or doesn't require, but most of it is completed with a PUD. Requirements to multifamily is a minimum of 30%. Requirements of multi-family is a minimum thirty percent of the area needs to be brick or stone. Waki, the Kettlestone District, again, has its own architecture requirements. Downtown District has district guidelines, and then recent PUDs, even with single-family development, are required a minimum amount of brick or stone.
And what did you say, we currently have right now?
For multi-family?
Yeah.
We require brick on all sides of high-density developments, but we have no percentage on materials. So in essence, you could put one square foot of brick on each side and comply.
Okay.
Um, and in talking with these communities, it sounds like quite a few of them that don't have requirements within the straight zoning are anticipating an update that would include some kind of language on architecture requirements. That's Ankeny, Indianola, Johnson, Waki. And then, give you some perspective on the, on the federal side, federal projects and public housing authority projects. Their durability requirements, um, and this is on their scoring system, but a minimum sixty percent of the gross exterior area needs to be four-inch nominal masonry. That will get you ten points. For seven points, it's down to forty percent of the gross. So then, just real quickly, we've got some examples on percentage of brick. So this is zero to twenty percent. Twenty to forty percent. Forty to sixty percent. And then sixty to eighty percent. So what we're proposing, overall requirements, we do talk about the massing in scale and mitigating some of the, um, things such as garages. We're not even talking about masonry yet, but we do ask that, especially the larger buildings, do what they can to mitigate that big mass. And then, specific requirements for materials. We don't prohibit composite materials, we just say that we need to make sure that they are appropriate representation of the material that they're, they're trying to provide. So binding vinyl and metal siding can be installed as long it has proper steel. So, just stepping through multi-family, if this detached townhome, there's no requirements. Attached up to two-story and four units, a minimum of two material types, twenty percent of the total cladding area of the facades facing a street, so incorporate that third material, brick or stone. Going up, so we have more than four units attached, but still a two-story, requiring forty percent of the total cladding area to be masonry, brick or stone, incorporated on all sides of the building, predominantly on the lower story. That's where we get the most bang for the buck, is that's where people experience it. And three-story or more, it's sixty percent of the total cladding area, area shall be masonry. Again, on all sides of the building, predominantly on the lower story. And then you'll notice, we talk about plating area, we don't talk about building percentage, because in essence, the developers are then being penalized for their windows and doors. Um, also, to give, um, the council some flexibility, if they feel they have a well-designed project that doesn't meet those requirements, we've added that the city council has the right to waive up twenty-five percent of those masonry requirements if they feel that they meet the intent of having a well-designed residential project. That avoids the, the process of going through a variance. So, more questions?
Let me, uh, let's have the public hearing first, and then we'll see if there's other questions. I think we ought to continue until the developers have had a chance to comment, but...
Agreed.
Um, I'll open the public hearing, so now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item six A. Okay. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, then. Um, additional questions for Lynda, other than, uh, deferring it for, until we can get some input from the development community? I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand, Lynda, why are, why is this all of a sudden such a huge issue? I mean, these are very specific requirements. Somebody's spent a ton of time on this. I drive, I drive around the city, and all these new apartment projects that have been built around Jordan Creek Town Center, no one's had any concerns about how those look, or anywhere else in the city. Now, maybe the old ones is a different issue, but the new ones, I have not heard anyone have a, have any issue with what ultimately the architecture was. So is this a solution looking for a problem?
Well, I, I think we had a discussion on this way back when. We talked about, um, oh gosh, where is it? I always get the name, Overland Park, Kansas, and some of the development standards that they have, and wanting to kind of up our game a little bit, and that's where this came from, I think. But it was, I mean, several years ago that we had brought that up. So I think a lot of people have probably forgotten about it. I like this, I think this was very thoughtful, very well put together. I, I frankly, I like, I like what you guys put for that, that second part of what we just discussed. The first part's where I have a little bit more heartache and pain, trying to think about how, how single-family homeowners are gonna respond to this product being in their neighborhood. I think any time where we've tried to, um, do this with different products in the same zoning, you, you've, you get yourself into some trouble. So I'm not sure that I'm, I gotta think a little bit more about that. But this other thing, I think, I think we do need to make sure that we are maintaining a very nice community, and having a certain percentage of stone and brick, and, and I thought that was very well thought out. I just, but to your point, I, I think we need to definitely run this by the developers and see what, what they say. Now, what you guys had there doesn't seem like it's that much more onerous to me than what the other communities have. So if they say, my gosh, this is going to really bring development to a halt in West Des Moines, well, it's not in Ankeny, it's not in Altoona, it's not in, I get their land prices are different, but, but that feedback's really important, I think, to all of us.
And to answer your original question, most of the stuff around the mall is within a specific plan, and that has its own architecture requirements. One of the things that we see as staff is, as we get more multi-family projects in, the quality of design is starting to drop. We heard that from the other communities we talked to also. And what that sets up then is when they come in, and there's not criteria like this to give them the expectation, is it is, uh, uh, back and forth that delays the review process, because they will come in with the minimum. We say, you need more brick, and they say, well, how much? Well, we don't have a requirement to be able to give you any guidance or any kind of enforcement. And so, really, we're trying to take that development process where it turns back and forth, back and forth, into, these are our expectations, this is our intent, and get them to, within that first middle, get to that point where West Des Moines feels comfortable.
Mm-hmm, I think the key is striking that balance.
Yeah, and I appreciate too, the enormous amount of work that has gone into this in trying to make it specific and well-defined, to eliminate and minimize the back and forth. Because I know there's tons of back and forth that delays things on the process. But I think it could be a little short sighted without, like the mayor is saying, some conversations with the developers to get a sense and feel of what their thoughts are and what concerns or issues they have. But, um, I do appreciate the enormous amount of work that's been put into laying out kind of a roadmap and a plan for how we should be moving forward with some specific guidance.
And we know the major apartment developers. Now, we've had some new ones come to town. I think you ought to share it with all of them. I, I guess the other thing that we need to understand too, is are there some areas of West Des Moines where this shouldn't apply, because it affects affordability?
Yeah, yeah.
We have to be careful that, no, we're not running the price up so high that we don't have any affordable apartments anymore. So I think we have to look at the geographic locations of some of these, because there may be some areas of West Des Moines where these standards shouldn't apply. So maybe we shouldn't have the twenty-five percent limitation on the waiver, it should be more than that, or we ought to identify areas in our community as a part of the comp plan that says these higher standards don't apply here, because we don't want to affect affordable, affordable housing. So we probably need to look at that piece too.
I, I, I agree, I agree a hundred percent. But I think there's, I think where we need to, to get is that middle between having a very nice-looking product and keeping our community looking nice, and not having that comment that we hear cookie cutter everywhere, and affordability. There's, where affordability and design standards meet, I think that's where we want to be, and I think that's what you guys tried to do here. You know, I think it's a point well-taken, though. There might be some parts of town that we're trying to, uh, you know, we're trying to go about affordable housing and, and getting people into these different products, and this would definitely affect that. I, I would be frankly, in favor of taking a look at all this, really locking it down, getting where the council feels comfortable, and getting rid of the, of the waiver. And I'll tell you why. Because every single person's gonna come in and ask for that waiver.
And that was staff's concern.
I'd rather not do that. I'd rather say, these are the design standards that we came up with, that we find reasonable. They're in between, um, making the community look really nice, and also having affordable housing. We felt that it was reasonable, and there is no waiver.
And I said this at P and Z, this is extremely difficult to codify good design. I mean, and, and we're really trying to provide the flexibility to have some good design solutions, and so, we're hoping that this kind of sets that framework. But maybe while I'm up here, is there any other provisions that you had questions on that we can go through?
Well, I think we ought to get the comments back from the development community, and that may generate other areas of discussion. So I think we ought to continue it until, until we've had adequate input, because I'm sure we're gonna get it. And if you could give us a list of the developers that it was sent to, even if they don't respond, who it was sent to and who the person was, because this is a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
This is a significant thing that I don't want to finalize until we've had sufficient input.
So we'll reach out to them, I would say...
I don't understand the part either.
If you want to have enough time to get that input, we would probably need to continue it at least four weeks.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what the...
Is there a rush, like what you said, is there a rush to get this done?
Um, some of the other provisions as far as setback and bulk regulations, we keep getting pushed back, and we've actually had three or four developments that we've done with a PUD, just because they couldn't take advantage of this. So, um, and we can certainly bifurcate that and pull out the architecture requirements, and then just go with the rest of the ordinance?
That, I would prefer that, because I, I may support the one and not the other. I don't know.
Okay.
Still thinking.
So why don't we, because I, I'm not sure we're gonna have a full quorum on the eighteenth. Why don't we continue this until the first meeting in April? And let's see where we're at, and if there's pieces that the council's comfortable passing that time, and we'll see what the comments we have back.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So someone want to move to continue this?
I'll move to continue for a month.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Now, I, I just want to say what Renata did too. The, thank you so much for delving into this, all the research that went into it, contacting all the other communities, the thoughtfulness that went into the design standards, I mean, this is phenomenal. So thank you for all that you've done.
Okay, item six B, we're being asked to continue that to the March eighteenth, twenty nineteen city council meeting.
Move, move consideration.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes.
Item six C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the assignment of a permanent easement for road right-of-way northeast corner of Iowa Highway twenty-eight and southwest McKinley Avenue, initiated by the City of Des Moines. This was continued from the February nineteenth city council agenda. Ryan, would you please read the date this notice was published?
February twenty-third, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
And now be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the West Des Moines City Council on item six C. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a resolution to approve the assignment of the permanent easement.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just a, just a quick question, didn't, didn't this go along with the development of Veterans Parkway over to the east?
So we can do those.
Okay, so I guess it's not happening, so we're just...
Yeah, this, this, this is actually located in this corporate limits of Des Moines.
Right.
We acquired it as a part of the project with the intent of transferring it back to Des Moines, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So...
Well, it's disappointing this project's not gonna happen, because they decided to put an economic development project right in the middle of the road, but I guess we have to continue with this action.
Yeah, and I, you know, I've, we've had a brief discussion at the MPO on this, and I said, I think the city of Des Moines is disadvantaged in itself based on this, but that's the decision that they can make, and they can be held accountable for it. So, um, I think it makes sense in light of where the easement's located, that the city of West Des Moines no longer has responsibility for it.
Right, agreed.
Okay, please vote on six C.
Aye.
Four yes.
Six D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider recodification of the West Des Moines City Code, initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
And now be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item six D. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, this is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes, nor is adopting the city code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, twenty nineteen.
Move approval the first reading.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes.
Six C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider EP True Parkway widening, Jordan Creek Parkway to eighty-first Street, initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right, now be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item six E. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
You know, the only comment I would make, and maybe it's a question, is, is why are we doing a Hawk Beacon here? Uh, and, and not because it, it maybe doesn't need it, but there's so many other places in the city that I think we may need one of these, like Thirty-Ninth and EP True.
Working on that.
And, you know, how the decision was made to do one here, I, I don't know, because it seems like Thirty-Ninth and EP True would be more of a priority, given how long it's been like that.
Uh, Brian Hemis, City Engineer, uh, we, when this project was in its infancy, we did some, uh, traffic counts, both vehicle, vehicular and pedestrian counts at that intersection. And it, and it found that it, it met the warrants for, for a Hawk Beacon at that location.
Okay.
So as part of this project, we determined that this was a good time to, while everything was torn up, to get that put in.
And Waki School District's paying half of this as well.
And Waki School District is paying for half of the, uh, the Hawk Beacon.
That helps.
Yes.
That helps, okay, I, I get it with that. I just, I just feel like this thing skipped the line and jumped over Thirty-Ninth and EP True, that's... It just rubs me the wrong way a little bit.
We're working on Thirty-Ninth and EP True to get one there as well.
Yeah, we are, yeah, we're working through the, uh, traffic counts and pedestrian counts there, to see if it warrants one there as well.
I know that school crossing has been a huge issue to those neighbors. We dealt with that years ago, trying to solve that situation. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, please vote on six E.
Aye.
Four yes.
Six F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the twenty-nineteen PCC reconstruction program initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right, now be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item six F. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I always just compliment staff on maintenance that we do, and I think this program's excellent, and that we stay on top of it is, is great for our residents, and we keep our streets up. So, appreciate this very much.
Okay.
One other question, though, and I guess this is for Sally. Sally, where are we at in getting a new route? Because I think we need to get that advertised out pretty quick, that, what's changing with that. So is Parks and Rec getting a plan put together for how we're gonna redo the Fourth of July Parade? Because this is gonna be right in the middle of it.
For a minute, I was like, what does this have to do with Parks and Rec?
Last sentence there under background.
I remember one time we went south, straight south.
Gone down Ashworth as well, so...
Sally Orgies, Director, Parks and Recreation. Um, we have a meeting tomorrow, actually, so staff will start looking at different routes, and it probably will involve Ashworth more.
While we're doing this, can we do research to see how many other cities have a three-and-a-half-mile parade?
I think we're at...
I can't complain, I ride, I can't.
You're gonna throw off how much candy we need, we got it figured out.
That's true.
Ryan, I know, I know, it's gonna make it hard. And then, along with that, we're also looking at communication and how that's going to work. Not only to those people who are now potentially going to be affected by the parade, but those who are used to having the parade.
Yeah. Yeah, the people on Vine are not gonna be happy that the parade is not gonna pass their front yard.
Right, so we're, we'll also take care of that communication.
The value of their lawn on StubHub's gonna go way down.
Exactly.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Six G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Twenty-seventh Street and Vine Street box culvert reconstruction, initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item six G. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and the motions we can take together, and this came through the Public Services Council Committee.
Move, second.
Questions or comments?
Aye.
All right, please, please vote.
Four yes.
Six H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the Public Safety Station twenty-one flat roof replacement, initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor. None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6H. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Aye.
All right, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, item 7, New Business. 7A, Browns Woods Hollow, west side of Veterans Parkway, south of southeast Browns Woods Drive, subdivide property into 44 single-family lots, one lot for park use, two lots for detention, and four public street lots, Browns Woods LLC. It's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat. There are no outstanding issues, but staff's recommending an additional condition of approval of the preliminary plat as item 1, that the remaining staff comments be addressed and final drawings submitted prior to construction of any improvements to the property. So, that would be in addition to what the planning and zoning passed.
Move approval of the preliminary plat with the staff recommendations.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes.
All right, 7B, the long-awaited Steak 'n Shake, 8:15, South 51st Street. Approval of a site plan to construct a 6,412-square-foot restaurant with drive-through Steak 'n Shake Iowa LLC. It's a resolution to approve the site plan, there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Check it.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote. I think that was one of the highest vote-getters in the register's poll on what additional restaurants folks would like.
Four yes.
7C, Raccoon River Park Boathouse, 2,500 Grand Avenue. Approval of a site plan to construct a boathouse with boat docks on Blue Heron Lake and Raccoon River Park. City of West Des Moines Resolution to approve the site plan, there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the site plan.
Is there a second?
Check it.
All right, please vote. Great project.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this.
Aye.
Long overdue.
Four yes.
7D, Salmon's Plata Survey, southwest corner of South 81st Street and Mills Civic Parkway. Approved a plata survey for transfer of ownership, Clara Bell Etzel. This is approval and release of the plata survey, and there are no issues.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Check it.
All right, please vote. 7E, Amendment to City Code Title VII, Public Ways and Property, Chapter 8, Sewer Regulations, Article F, Industrial Waste, Revisions to Fats, Oils, and Grease Regulation. City Nace, this is an ordinance for the first reading. We had a workshop recently with one of the engineers for the WRA, and went through some of the changes, and we asked a lot of questions. I think we're happy that some of the changes are being made, maybe not as far as we'd like to go, but we're getting some incremental changes, and so I think everybody was happy to at least get started with these.
Very well said.
All right, someone want to move the first reading?
Move consideration of the first reading.
Is there a second?
Check it.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes, NORM amending the City Code, City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by many Title VII, Public Ways and Property, Chapter 8F, Industrial Waste.
I think the only comment is that we will not stop here, we will keep pushing for more change, as you said, but move approval of the first reading.
Thank you.
All right, please vote. Item 8, there are no items to receive, file, and/or refer. Item 9, other matters. 9A, legislative updates. Jamie?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have just four or five things to note. This week is the first funnel, March 8th, so any items that are not through Subcommittee or in budgetary or restricted, subcommittees will die on the vine for next year. A couple important items of note that staff really pulled together and worked hard on this weekend. Late last week, we were notified of a bill that restricted funding that we've used in the past to acquire parkland. It really limited our options to, that we have to encourage conservation privately-owned land along, like the Raccoon River area specifically. That would be House File 542 and Senate Study Bill 1221. And both had subcommittees today. Our lobbyists are telling us late this afternoon that the House bill looks like it's not going to move in its current form, if at all, and ultimately, that cities would be carved out of the final version. So, that is good news. It's still concerning enough that we'll monitor and watch that item. But a big thanks to the Parks Department, who pulled together a lot of information on how we use those funding sources. Senate File 368, House Study Bill 100, that restricts of lawful pre-existing non-conforming uses, prevents a city from enforcing an ordinance that would restrict a non-conforming use from continuing. Right now, we're registered undecided. Planning Department had contacted me, asked to register against. I sent out an email today. You know, in talking with our lobbyists, an undecided registration is really maybe where we would probably be able to make the most impact. An undecided registration says, I don't really know if I like this or not, but I at least have a seat at the table and can offer input on how to make it better. So, we're undecided right now, and a registration against can set some folks off to a point where they wouldn't really even talk to you about how to improve the bill or make it better. So, while we're registered undecided, we understand the concerns of that bill, we'd like to stay undecided, and we'll just keep working on it, so. Senate Study Bill 1152, House Study Bill 32. This is fees for right-of-way use. I wanted to address this to you all, because I've had conversations with the mayor about our involvement in this bill. This is a bill that was brought forward by some utility companies. Early, before session began, CenturyLink contacted me with some really rough description of what they were trying to accomplish. They're trying to sort of put some limitations on what they are having to pay municipalities for the use of their right-of-way. CenturyLink's been very helpful in working on our fiber management program that will kind of clean up our right-of-way. Their first version of the bill really restricted us to be able to move forward on the program that they're excited about joining us with. So, we worked together to allow some space in the bill to, for West Des Moines to continue working in our right-of-way with the program that we're kicking off in 2019. We're currently not registered on the bill. We really don't have a reason to register. We've been asked to register by other municipalities in our Metro Coalition, and it's my position, staff's position, City Manager's Office position, that we just stay out of it for right now. So, I wanted to bring it to your attention, because people are calling us and asking us why we're not registered, asking us to register. It's just not something that I feel we need to get involved in, because we just do things differently. We've never had an issue with utilities companies paying bills when they disrupt sidewalk, and we've never had that issue.
But doesn't the policy that's in that bill mirror what we have in the City of West Des Moines?
It does, yeah, now, now it does.
The confusion was, I was getting calls, because it was represented at the start of the session, that West Des Moines was involved in drafting it, and everybody thought it was CenturyLink. So, what I learned was, we got involved in just provisions of it, so that it didn't inhibit the ability for us to do private partnerships and allow what we're doing now. We weren't getting involved in whether or not Des Moines was going to charge, and if so how much. But the confusion came when providers were calling, saying, well, it was represented that West Des Moines was a drafter of this bill.
Yeah, I wouldn't say that we created the bill, we didn't draft the bill. We helped to, as the mayor said, preserve our right to continue doing business in our right-of-way the way that we're set to do business in 2019, with public-private partnerships.
We made a change in our right-of-way policy years ago, and it opened up all kinds of investment from the telecommunications companies, cable providers, and this bill essentially mirrors what our policy has been, correct? I mean, we don't charge people for being in the right-of-way unless they disturb it, and then they've got to pay to put it back, right?
Correct. And this is how we've maintained a great relationship with utilities in our right-of-way in West Des Moines.
Okay.
But I think you have some cities saying, this is local control, and if we want to charge, we should be able to. If you don't want to, that's your issue, so don't get, you know, don't get involved.
Which makes sense in the undecided. Hey, this is our policy, we like it if you don't want to do it.
Not even undecided.
The confusion was...
Not even registered.
Not even registered.
The confusion was, the people associated with CenturyLink were representing that we were drafting the bill, so we just needed to clarify what our role was.
Correct. That we were involved in as much as to continue preserving our public-private partnership interest in how we like to do business in our right-of-way, but otherwise, other cities feel really passionately about that, and that's fine.
Sure.
Let's see. Last is a city utility bill that legal department and engineering has worked on stormwater